Hi, welcome to this meeting of the school, regular school, welcome to this regular meeting of the Arlington School Committee on Thursday, May 24th, 2018. I'm Kyrse Allison-Ampy, I'm Chair of the Committee. Dr. Bodie, our Superintendent, is not here. She will not be joining us tonight because her husband is receiving an award down on the Cape and we're all very impressed and we hope to hear more about it when she comes back. In the meantime, I'm going to move right along, so we're going to start with public participation. Alham Sadat.
Hello. My name is Alham Sadat and I just wanted to come tonight to, for mainly to say thank you to everyone on the committee who has worked particularly hard around addressing the issues with after-school care. Dr. Bodie, who unfortunately isn't here, thank you for speaking to key people to do this. Her direct dialogues added 50 additional headcount to Thompson, Hardy Bracket programs and that's 50 families who are not having panic attacks and are able to sleep a little bit easier at night. So, thank you tremendously for that. And the Community Relations Subcommittee, Len, Jennifer, and Jeff Theoman, thank you so much for your efforts and Jennifer particularly for leading the charge on this. I just wanted to say thank you from, both from myself and also from the rest of the families that were involved with this. Just one follow-up item that we've made great progress across Hardy, Thompson, and Bracket, it would be wonderful to see some additional kind of specific action at Stratton, Pierce, and Dallin. And yes, thank you again, very, very much appreciate it and that's it. Have a good day.
Thank you. Scott Lindsey?
My name is Scott Lindsey, I'm the parent of a third-grade student at the Dallin Elementary School. I spoke at last Friday's Subcommittee Meeting, I recognize some of you from there, and I read a statement from a group of concerned parents at that meeting. It was regarding a survey that was administered to our children back in April without parents' knowledge. And I asked two questions during that meeting. It's, one, if the committee knew of that survey, was aware. Everyone told me they were not made aware of that. And, two, if that would be shared with this larger committee. So, my first question is, has that been shared?
We do not respond to any.
Yeah, this is just a chance for you to say what you want to say.
So, the survey and question was age inappropriate, it was highly ideological in nature, it upset many of the students, many of the parents, I'm still getting emails from a great many parents. It posed questions to third graders such as, "If I could choose my race or ethnicity, I would choose to be the same race or ethnicity that I am." In this class, we spend a lot of time talking about inequality and social justice. In this class, we spend a lot of time talking about the political and social struggles people from other cultures have faced or continue to face in the US today. And these questions were asked to be ranked. The section headers were socio-political consciousness, my daughter asked me, she didn't even know what that meant. And the reason I bring this up is this has become indicative of other items that have taken place. There's been, along with the survey, I wonder if the committee's aware that, again, third graders, a specialist was brought in to discuss in-depth transgenderism to our kids and they were extremely confused, very personal issue, something parents would like to get a heads up and speak with their children about. We were not made aware of this. We were also told by our children that they were asked not to talk about certain things, AKA to a child keeping secrets, by the staff at the school. We asked about what? There were a few different items. I also wonder if this group is aware that articles were sent out to parents after Colonial Day regarding white privilege that said our kids, quote, "belong to the oppressor class more or less," end quote. I want to let the committee know that there's a large group of parents organizing, they're not happy, we come from all different backgrounds and different political spectrums. We're concerned that the neutrality of the school is not there, we're wondering why academia is not being focused on more and why, in this case, why a survey that claims to deal with the emotional wellbeing of its kids clearly had the opposite effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Askanian?
Well, I came in support, I'm sorry, Ara Aslanian. I'm a fellow Dallin parent, I came in support of Scott's statement, what he said is absolutely correct. There seems to be a lack of neutrality in the schools and I just want to relate something, an anecdote that was raised with my daughter, who is a student at Audison. So, I just want to begin by saying my daughter is a straight A student at Audison. What she has taught, she learns. Several weeks ago, she said that she participated in a walkout in regards to the gun violence in Parkland, the Parkland shooting. I said, "Oh, that's interesting," and she said she spent a lot of time with it and she spent a lot of time with her friends organizing and the teachers and administrators and so on. And so, I said, "Oh, okay, what were you protesting?" She said, "Well, gun violence." And I said, "Well, what laws are you intending to change?" Answer, "I don't know." I said, "Oh, interesting, okay, if you wanted to change a law, where would you go? Who would you talk to?" Answer, "I don't know." I said, "Okay, well, let's dig a little deeper here. What are the three branches of government?" Answer, "I don't know." Okay. And this was a student that participated in this walkout. And so, I thought it was shameful that the kids were not informed about basically what they were doing. However, I was even more enraged when I got an email from Kathleen Bodie basically cheering on the whole episode, cheering on delinquency, completely unaware that these kids had no clue of what they were talking about. And even more disturbing, she said she was proud that she was creating basically social activists in the Arlington Public School System. I want my child to be an informed citizen, okay? And I don't need Kathleen Bodie turning my child into a social activist with no information at her disposal to make that decision. I am very disturbed at the lack of neutrality, again, in the Arlington Public Schools and it's disturbing to have Kathleen's personal politics all over the place in her newsletters and her statements in her newsletters. And so, I just wanted to make that known to the committee that this is something that I have noticed and a lot of parents at Dallin have noticed also. Thank you.
Thank you. Raji Bhagat?
Hi, I'm Raji and first of all, I would like to thank you all for being so patient and listening to us. I'm a parent of a future Stratton school, school-going kid, he's a kindergartner and I'm actually looping in back with what Alham basically mentioned about the after-school issues that we are facing. One of the key criterias that we think is still lacking is the transparency of the after-school and the waitlist that they have. It feels that the parents are still in dark about where their kids are in terms of the waitlist spot, what are the criteria of how they are picking the kids, and anything regarding a straight message to, a concrete answer to the parents. I feel the Stratton School is one of those schools where we haven't been getting a straight answer from the director and I feel like it would be a great idea if the after-school program heads who are not managed by the town are more transparent and actually they reach out to the principal and they work with the community and town and actually have the pulse of what's happening in the schools so that the kids are not left behind and we have two, three-years waitlist for 30 to 40 kids. So, I really, really appreciate all of the committee members to listening to us and actually making all of these things happen and we are actually seeing a movement, so that's wonderful and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Ray LaFontaine?
I have one daughter currently at Hardy and two others who are going to be joining next year. So, we had originally three days of after-care at Hardy and we're waiting on two other days and we did get those, so I wanted to, you know, thank everybody here, you know, for their part they played in that, Dr. Bodie, Jennifer. Also like to thank Alham for spearheading this from our end, I know how much work she's done without her even telling me. We talked a little about some of the data that she had to get and in that industry in a way and I know how hard it is to get some of that information, so I wanted to thank everybody involved for that. One of the things I also do want to do is support the other folks though who don't know, still don't know what's going to happen with their kids. I was amazed at how quickly, not only were spaces put forth, but how quickly we found out, but when I then found out that there are still a lot of other folks who don't know, you know, I worry about those folks. I travel a lot for work, just found out I'm going to be, right now I'm local and I can pick up, you know, my girls' after-school, you know, in quite a few days, but I'm going to be out of town September, October, November for four days a week and if we didn't get those days, those extra couple of days, you know, I'm not sure what we really would have done, so I can only imagine what other parents who might be in the same position are feeling right now, you know, with school ending and, you know, the next school year starting in a couple of weeks or a couple of months. So, if anything can be done to help those folks out, then that'd be greatly appreciated, but, you know, thanks for what you've done so far.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that ends public participation for the evening. Thank you all for telling us what you're thinking about. Our next item on the agenda is the Green Ribbon School Award from Rachel Oliveri and the Thompson Green Team Students. Dr. McNeil?
Sure, thank you. Yes, I would like to highlight Rachel Oliveri and her work that she has done, she had to actually fill out a very extensive application and submitted it and that is the reason why we are receiving this award as a district. Just to give some background, the district is being honored for its leadership in reducing environmental impact and costs, improving the health and wellness of students and staff, and delivering effective environmental and sustainable, sustainability education that incorporates science, technology, engineering, and math, civic skills, and green career pathways. Arlington's winning award, award-winning application has also been submitted for consideration as a national Green Ribbon School District. And so, Rachel is here with a group of students from Thompson and she's going to introduce some of the projects that they have been working on that led to this award.
Sorry, that wasn't you. My fault.
Come on up to the mic.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that we did actually receive the national award, so we were not only nominated, but we did receive the National Green Ribbon School Award, so it's very exciting.
Thank you for that.
So, yes, and thank you to Dr. Bodie and to the school committee for giving us this opportunity to present to you today. As you just heard, I'm Rachel Oliveri, Arlington School Sustainability Coordinator. I work with all the Arlington Public Schools on waste reduction, recycling, and food waste diversion, and supporting student green teams and environmental clubs. I'm excited to be part of this group presenting to you the wonderful environmental education and action that's happening across the district and in particular at Thompson Elementary School. As we were delighted to learn last week, the Arlington Public Schools were selected as a winner of both the state and national Green Ribbon Schools Award, a designation, as we just heard, that recognizes our district's commitment to reducing our environmental impact and costs, improving health and wellness, and integrating environmental and sustainability education. Superintendent Kathleen Bodie noted in Friday's press release announcing the award, quote, "It is such an honor to be cited on the national level for our efforts to be a sustainable district and to educate students who see themselves as powerful change-makers," end quote. These Thompson students behind me who are here this evening are indeed powerful change-makers. In a few minutes, they will inform and entertain you with the many ways they engage and inspire their school community to reduce, reuse, recycle, and both take care of and celebrate the earth. Of course, we could not do this work without a community of support and we want to acknowledge all those within the Thompson School Community and across Arlington who contributed to our becoming a Green Ribbon School winner and who support our student green teams throughout the year. So, we want to thank at Thompson Karen Donato, the Thompson Principal, and Vicky Rose, the Administrative Assistant, the Food Services Staff, Lunchroom Monitors, and Custodial Staff, the Teachers, Nurse, Social Worker, and Librarian, the School Green Team Parent Leaders and Volunteers, the Thompson PTO, the Thompson After-School Program, our community partners, Food Link, Arlington Eats, Mothers Out Front, Arlington Garden Club, and of course, our District-wide Leaders, Dr. Kathleen Bodie, our Superintendent, Ken Pruitt, the Town Energy and Project Manager, Dr. Susan Frankie, the Nursing Director, Charlotte Millan, who's here, our Arlington Recycling Coordinator, Denise Boucher, Head of Food Services, Sarah Byrd, Director of Social and Emotional Learning, the School Committee, and Adam Chaptelain, our Town Manager. So, again, we are grateful to all of you who give your time, energy, and encouragement to this important sustainability work in the Arlington Public Schools. And I now happily turn the program over to the Thompson Elementary School Green Team Students and their superhero parent leader, Elizabeth Rocco, so you can hear more about their inspiring initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to need them to come up to the mic because that's how it gets broadcast.
When the Thompson Green Team started just over two years ago, students were invited to create sculptures of trash for the town's EcoFest at the Thompson Science Expo. In our second-grade classroom, we decided to collect previously-used styrofoam lunch trays to create giant sea creatures to educate the Arlington community on the harms of styrofoam and push our removal to these trays in the school cafeterias. During the now-annual second-graders' trash cleanup day, we did a trash audit. We used trash and recycling found to create education about recycling and reducing waste.
Thank you.
That same year, that same year, the Green Team third graders created a Zero Waste Day. Let's watch some of our first-year waste video.
Do you have any combos for use or recycle? If you're shopping with your parents, make sure you buy things healthy for the world.
All right, I apologize. Have you been?
Prove it, yeah.
Free, reuse, recycle, the three Rs.
Well, now we know. To do your thing, combos, reuse, or recycle. Next time you go shopping with your parents, make sure you buy things healthy for the world. That includes stuff like things you can recycle or things you couldn't fit in a container, but definitely not things you have to throw away. And when you're done with them, those recyclables are perfectly fine. And combos are really good. So, Thompson, are you ready for Zero Waste Day? This Friday, Duke Tech, be there. That's the wasting step in life. Yeah!
Our first-year Waste Day showed that we could reduce waste by 97% if the school cafeteria switched to compostable trays and industrial composting. When Rachel Oliveri told the Green Team that the schools had decided to switch to industrial composting, seven months later, we were thrilled. We were inspired to write our Green Team song. We are awesome, we are powerful, we can change the world, we can do it together. And we created this video.
My name is Lucas Fernandez. I think composting is important.
Hi, I'm Alessandra Perillo and I think it's good that we're switching to compostable trays. It's because we don't have to throw them away.
Hi! Hey, y'all! Hey, buddy, I'm Nolan McCarthy. I think that composted trays are better than styrofoam trays because you have to throw out styrofoam trays. If you throw them away, they'll go to landfills and then it will just build up and build up. That's not good for the environment.
We made a Zero Waste Day to reduce waste. Before, we had industrial composting. We were throwing away 88 pounds of food waste every day. That's 97% of the weight of our lunchtime waste. Every day, we threw away around 220 styrofoam trays.
We can make a change to our school. Compost trays turn into dirt. Trash trays you can't do anything with. At our school, when there was styrofoam trays, we used to throw away all of them. That's how the trees burn. We made signs and skits and now we have achieved our goal and we inspired our school to change from styrofoam trays to compostable ones.
At Thompson, we visited the Colonial Day last year. Green Team parent volunteers came into the classroom to help us design and make a classroom storytelling wampum belt to represent our teachers in honor of our year together. In the sphere of the wampum belt that is made from sustainably harvested clamshells, we made a Green Team pendant out of sustainably sourced trash. In the same way Chief King Philip wore the Royal Wampenog Belt with symbols of animals and plants to show his sacred commitment and relationship to nature, we made a Green Team pendant with a symbol of the earth to wear as a necklace to show commitment to ourselves, our community, and the earth.
The theme of this year's EcoFest trash formations was ecosystem superheroes and supervillains. Thompson School decided to focus on superhero decomposers, bacteria, fungi, fungi and worms. Supervillains, single-use plastic. Green Team parents and teachers collaborated to do three classroom projects. First graders made gut bacteria superheroes with all sorts of superpowers to relate to food digestion and defense. Inspired by a slideshow of forest fungi, second graders made a sculpture of a tree with various superhero fungi.
Ms. Armstrong's fourth-grade class chose to focus on the harms of plastic cafeteria straws and the superpowers of red-wiggler compostable worms. They created a trash formation and a series of comic strips. My friends and I in Ms. Jettie's class chose to write persuasive essays about the harms of plastic straws in class. We created a letter and petition to the Director of the Food Services asking her to make the switch to compostable straws. Please read the letter in your packet. We then did a straw audit that showed we still have 169 straws at lunch. During Earth Week, some classmates created a sculpture of 169 straws and others transformed the comic strips and letters into two entertaining educational skits featured at an all-school Zero Waste Assembly. The next day at Zero Waste Day, we reduced plastic straws used by more than half.
As you can see, sustainability curriculum inspires students to be superheroes. And we have one last message for you. You are awesome. You are powerful. You can change the world. You can do it together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is amazing what all you've done, both the presentation and the award. It's really cool. Does anyone have any questions for our guests?
Can I say something?
Mr. Haner?
The biological compost, does somebody pick it up each day or do you keep it in the school all the time?
Yes, it is picked up weekly, the black earth compost.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. What was hardest for kids to sort of get used to? Because I know it involves sort of changing the way they sort of walk through the lines or, you know, I mean, what do you feel was sort of the biggest barrier?
Just come up to the microphone.
Oh, sorry. You have the microphone.
Just come back up to the microphone.
Probably the use of when we switched to compostable trays and compost the new, like, way we did everything, but now it's like more easy.
Now it's second nature. Yeah, okay.
But it's now like, it's like you won't get, like, the taste that we used to do the styrofoam trays, they don't really make sense anymore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, very inspiring. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Dr. McNeil?
Thank you very much for your presentation. It sounds like our environment is in good hands for the future, so thank you very much. And also, it sounds like you learned a lot and I actually learned a lot too by watching your presentation, so thank you. And again, thank you, Mrs. Oliveri, for your hard work and dedication. It's definitely appreciated.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I just wanted to second that. I got to be at Stratton on the first day that we did the composting there and Rachel was there and she just made the whole thing happen. It was very smooth. The kids were way better than the parents after like five minutes. You guys, like, kids can figure this out really fast. We were much more worried about it and, but no, it was really, it was wonderful, it was really nice to see, so congratulations, this is definitely a deserved recognition.
Mr. Chukman?
Yeah, this is all great, I love the activism. My question is about the plastic straws, because that sounds like a lot of plastic straws. How'd you notice we were using so much plastic? How did you figure out why it was a problem and how did you get it to come down to be cut so low? Are people, is it still going lower? Do we have a plastic straw expert in the group?
Well, me and my friends, we found, I found out that in 2030, there's scientists estimate that there'll be more trash on the earth than fish in the sea and I thought that was really, really bad, so I really, and so I thought that maybe we could stop using plastic straws and start, switch to compostable straws in our cafeteria to make a difference and we are getting there.
And so, what are we doing now?
Um, we're going to meet with the Director of the Food Services and we're going to ask to switch to either recyclable or compostable straws.
Ah, then that's going to be more than just the Thompson, you're going to hit the whole district. Good for you.
I have something to add to what you said.
Come on.
In the skit that cheated, I think she said this, but for a package of 400 compostable straws, it costs $8.50, just in case any of you wanted to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank our parent volunteer for your participation in this as well. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to, I'm pulling from the press release that I thought our audience, our studio, the studio audience knows this, but our millions of watchers outside probably don't recognize that this is a national, I mean, part of the award was a national award across the country, 46 schools, six districts, so out of the whole country, and six post-secondary institutions were being honored, so this is quite selective and thank you for helping make everyone proud of Arlington Public Schools, so thanks. So, our next item, which is also kind of appropriate, is health and wellness. And that's with Sue Frankie and, I'm sorry, Ms. Connors. Look, they just give me a first initial.
Lauren is our nurse at the Stratton as well as our diabetic care coordinator funded through the ESHS grant in that respect, so this is Lauren Connors.
Hi.
Nurse extraordinaire, thank you for having us on our yearly timetable. And I can't remember how to use one of these. It's just to the right hand, right? It's just the right hand? Okay, it's been a while. It's been a while. Well, thank you. I'm gonna try and make this quick because I know everybody wants to see the eight o'clock NECN, which we will touch on during this briefly. That's not in my notes because Kathy was communicating with me last night. I just wanted to give you some statistics. And you all have the agenda. Oops, I may have clicked one more. So as you can see, I just have some comparative statistics there. We are ending them in the same month of May, around the same time. We have greater than nine percent increase in student encounters this year in the health office. It's been a great year with our team. I cannot complain. It's been wonderful. We've had a grant that has helped support a full-time nurse to be a resource nurse in the district. We've been using the grant to fund screenings in the schools with, for the nurses, for vision hearing, posturals, height and weights, et cetera. But I just wanted you to just take a peek at this because it's just going up. Every year, it gets greater and greater. And on the report, it's not on the PowerPoint, but on the report, I found, I shouldn't say I found, the nurse at the Pierce School found some old files with old monthly reports. Every month, we have to submit pages and pages of report to the DPH. And it's very specific, very intricate. But I decided to do some comparative analysis just in the Pierce School on one afternoon, going through a stack that's heavy. In 2007, I think Lucille Nicholson, my predecessor, was the nurse there, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven encounters. Well, today, Thompson sees that in three days. This is one-hundred-and-seventy-seven in one month. And now this is in three days. Also at the Odysseum. Huge numbers at the Odysseum. So I just can't impress upon you enough that it's just getting to be greater and greater medical acuity and a lot more work for our team. And they grin and bear it, you know, they're wonderful, but it is becoming a little bit of a strain. On the next part, we have medication administrations. Oops. Looking at this too many times. It's just on your report. It's not that I needed this to be on the PowerPoint, but I just wanted you to see that between 2016 on the report that you have, eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-five medication administrations. That's not ibuprofen and Tylenol for headaches and such. That's daily meds, insulin injections, et cetera. 2018 projected to be almost twenty thousand. So just in two years, that's a huge increase. So these are just numbers that I think you should have and think about in terms of, you know, any kind of funding for our department. I only brought up defibrillators briefly. I brought this up last year. I tweaked this because we are buying some more. They are costly. They're about eleven-hundred dollars plus, depending on whether you get cabinets and other things. John and I were going over this the other day. Athletics is gonna have a large expense because now with the new bill that's been enacted as of July first coming, every athletic event and practice has to have a defibrillator within two minutes drive time. So that's something that the coaches are probably gonna have to bring with them. But it is, you know, for your understanding, this is state mandate. We have Narcan in all of the schools. We just got a new delivery for next year for Narcan. We have gone over to the more modern dose of four milligrams, a little higher dose. Knock on wood, we have not needed it once, and I hope we never do. But we do have it. It is recommended by the state to have it. So just wanted to let you know, we do have that in all of our emergency bags. We are looking to really watch our budget. So we only supply one in each school with the understanding that within a couple of minutes, if we did need it, EMS would be here to supply a potential second dose if it was needed in an emergency. But we have the highest nasal milligram dosage there is now. So it's twice as strong as the other stuff that we used to have. And we did buy that through our grant also. Oops. Sorry. So I just also wanted to clarify that this was the first year we did our state mandated expert screening. That's screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment required at the middle school level in one grade and at the high school level in one grade. Last year, we got a grant to pilot it. We piloted it in the middle school at Odysseum. It was enormously successful. We had Ivy LaPlante running it. We gave her part of a grant from the state to manage it, and she did a great job. You know, we have a low referral rate, which is sort of the expected outcome. But this is mandatory, and this is important stuff. So we do still use the craft screening tool for this. And I just wanted to let you know that all the screenings are complete. We finished up with the high school a little later in the year. That went really well, I have to say. I actually, I apologize for that. We did the high school this fall and Odysseum in the spring. High school was great. The social workers and the guidance counselors were really cooperative and helpful. So I just wanted to put that out there. I have field trips on my report.
I do too.
Good. That's good. These are the bane of my existence, as well as my assistant, Carol. So Lauren's gonna speak on the higher acuity of diabetes in the district right now, which I can't account for. It's really, it's doubled. But, and I've said this every year, and I send out an email to the principals every fall, sometimes reiterating in the spring, and I feel bad that they keep having to hear me, just repeat myself. But the reality is with the Americans with Disabilities Act, we have to provide a medical person, an RN, or the parent of the child with a serious medical issue or syndrome on a field trip. If they get a medication or if they need immediate evaluation. So because parents are busy, we are sending a lot of our nurses. So on your report, you'll see that we've sent twenty-six of our own on field trips this year that we have scheduled, and there's more coming. So that doesn't include agencies that we've sometime had to go to. And on your report, you'll see it costs us a hundred and sixty dollars to send one of our perdiems. Sometimes what we do is we'll have a perdiem cover the office and the school nurse will go on the field trip. Sometimes I'll go on the field trip. I actually like going on the field trips, as long as it's not a long bus drive. It's actually kind of fun. But the reality is, is it's costly. If we have to bring in an agency, it's three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And it's not like we don't have a great perdiem pool. We do. But we have a lot of hospital-based nurses that work full-time. So we can't always get them. So we, and we also have a lot of schools that will schedule three in one day, which sounds great, but it's a nightmare for us if they're going in all different directions, which is the case, I think, this week in one of the schools. So it's been a real challenge. And I just can't say enough about that. We had, and sometimes what happens is if they're outdoor field trips, they get canceled, of course, and they get rescheduled. But then, oh, well, we're gonna have it next week. Well, we have to scramble and try and find someone. That's not always easy to do. My assistant, Carol Howard, is excellent at keeping everything organized and putting it out there to all the perdiems. She's much better than I am. But I just, again, that's been challenging. We've done it. We only had one field trip that came close to being canceled. If we can't have a medical person staffed on a field trip that's needed, we have to cancel that field trip. We don't want to do that ever. And it came close once. Okay, I'm gonna skip over the ICC because Lauren's gonna be talking about that. But I just wanted to finish up with some small departmental notes. We did move one of our high school nurses down to the monomyne preschool. There's a really high acuity, medical acuity of students in the preschool. And I am really surprised, I waited so long to put someone down there, to be honest with you. You know, obviously, I can't mention names, but there are children with tracheostomies down there, more than one. We do have a one-to-one nurse on our own team that's down there also with a student. But, and then the monomyne nurse also covers the Millbrook. So she has to go out every day, or he, we do have a gentleman on staff, to Millbrook to deliver medications and assess students that are over there. So that's a daily trip, rain or snow or sunshine. So I strongly recommend that we do keep someone down there moving forward. It's a great program. Small, other small departmental notes. I mentioned earlier, we have a great team of perdiem nurses, knock on wood. They're wonderful. Our new hires are doing great. We have a few nurses going for their graduate degrees or graduate certifications. No pressure. No pressure. Especially a lot of our perdiems are in NP programs. We are still overseeing a small grant for Somerville. GPH gives us the money, and then we manage it for them. And we just closed that account this week. Let's see. We are going to be funding a nurse, no names will be mentioned, to go take a legal issues and nursing graduate course, which I think is incredibly timely. This is also gonna be grant-funded. And we also collaborate with the private schools, all the private schools in the district. All the nurses in them have my email, my phone number. If they need anything, they know they can call me for any kind of consultations. And we did supply them with Narcan, one of the schools with Narcan last year. Hardy School has a new nurse, Cara Dalton, is gonna be going over to the Gibbs. And we have a nurse practitioner from Children's Hospital that's stepping up, and she's gonna be the nurse at the Hardy School. Love to see another nurse position at Arlington High. We only have one in the main office and one downstairs. Although their numbers really didn't jump up, you know, they're well-controlled, ideally, given how many students are in the building. I think for, in the future, we really should consider getting another nurse position there. And the last thing I want to talk about personally, before Lauren takes over and we answer any questions is, I don't know if anyone had the chance to see on NBC 10 last night, Kristen DeFrancisco, Cara Dalton, and some other staff being interviewed about anxiety with children in the schools. And if you go on the website, which I did and spent some time, they have some wonderful, sort of one-to-one interviews about parents and children with anxiety. Very timely, especially with all the social media issues. It's on again tonight at eight o'clock on NECN. So I have to run home after this, to watch it again. And this is a big deal. This is something that we're seeing. The numbers at Hardy, I presented last year at the school committee meeting at this time, the numbers there were incredibly low compared to the rest of the district. We think that it's because of the responsive classrooms. So there was the occupational therapist, the social worker, the nurse. There may have been a few other people, and I apologize if I don't know who they are, that did go in and teach these classes. I went in and saw one of the classes. It was very engaging, very thoughtful, helping the children to sort of figure out how to be resilient in different situations. Numbers don't lie. It's a very successful program. And we can prove it with our own data, with how many encounters were in Hardy this year. Now granted, this year, there was a bump up in numbers compared to last year, but still statistically significant compared to the rest of the district. So whatever they're doing, they should keep doing. And if there's programming for that, I do encourage that. So it's good stuff, anyway. So I'd like to present Lauren Connors.
Hi, I'm Lauren Connors. I'm the Stratton nurse and also the diabetes care coordinator for Arlington. I know Sue touched briefly. We currently have eighteen type-one diabetics. Last year, we started the year with nine. The previous year, we had seven. So type-one is autoimmune. There's nothing to prevent it. So obviously, there's a huge increase in Arlington right now. We're fortunate enough to have each nurse at, it covers all elementary schools, middle school, and high school, to track the diabetic students that wear continuous glucose monitors on an iPad in their office so they can see if their blood sugar is dropping, and they can respond, or going too high, and they can respond immediately. So what this does essentially is keep them in class and keep them safe. So each hypoglycemic, low-blood-sugar event is a minimum of fifteen minutes out of class. Over the past year, to this past school year and last school year, we've had a significant decrease in the hypoglycemic events, office visits, and hyperglycemic events because the nurses are able to respond immediately. Hopefully, moving forward, we'll be able to continue with that. We have two incoming kindergarteners that are diabetic, so that will bring us up to twenty. And so far, I mean, eighty-nine percent improvement rate over acute diabetes in the last year. That means decreased office visits, decreased hypoglycemic and hyperglycemic events. There's been no dismissals or tardies related to it. There's been no hospitalizations aside from new diagnoses. And I have to contribute all of that to the nurses responding so well.
So Lauren spoke at the statewide nurse leader meeting last Thursday to present diabetes fatigue, which is a phenomenon that I was not familiar with. And did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
They wanted, they were so impressed. The numbers that you have in front of you on a spreadsheet, which I think is on one of the...
One of the slides.
One of the slides, yeah. Again, numbers don't lie. Lauren, put this spreadsheet together.
So what this does is it tells the office visits in the decrease. There was a slight increase in one or two students, but that could have been another illness. What you want to see is like the previous month. So each month, they're improving time out of class, which is phenomenal.
For the most part, we don't see students with chronic medical illnesses versus mental health illnesses. We don't see a lot of time out of class with these students. And it's interesting because if you look at national data, they always want us to do these, this work on diabetes and asthma and such because they think it does. And that does occur in the urban settings. But here, we don't have that issue. It's been well-controlled for the most part, comparatively, I should say. But what we don't know is why we're seeing such an increase in students with diabetes.
I think that's the concern. Arlington's had a huge spike in type-one diabetes. And like I said, it's non, you can't prevent it. It's autoimmune, so kind of getting to the bottom of that right now is a huge issue.
Mr., thank you very much.
Oh, sure.
Mr. Hayner?
One of my concerns, on that first chart that you had, the increase in injuries, do we, do we have any information on that? In one year, it's up, it's up over a thousand.
Yeah, I kind of think it has to do with some of the play structures, to be honest with you. That's my personal opinion.
That's what I was afraid of.
Yeah.
Do you have any data on it? I mean, do you keep information when a child is injured and stuff? It's identified and stuff like that?
Oh, yes. So if we, we have all the data. We can pull data, we have a really great record system, electronic medical record system. It's excellent. Sometimes you have to spend some time pulling the data. It's not always easy. Sometimes it's very easy, sometimes it's not. But, yeah, we can pull out what type of injuries. We keep track of all the accident reports. We did have a decent amount of accident reports this year from students falling from play structures.
You and I are gonna talk, because I'm on the facilities. The other question I have is that on the defibrillators, you had three scheduled for Gibbs and two at Odysseum.
I know.
Should that be switched? Or is it a matter of getting them because of part of the construction money?
I think it was part of the, I can't speak on that. I actually was surprised there were three. I thought there was just gonna be two.
Right. I mean, one-third of the middle school is there, two-thirds are up there, and it's two up with the, just the numbers just didn't seem right.
We may be able to switch one up because I think if I remember correctly, looking at the, where the defibrillators were plotted on the schematic, it was, there's two that aren't that far from each other.
Is it, if I may, is it considered based on how many students, how many people you have in a building?
Not to the best of my knowledge. It's possible, and I just don't know that.
Because I mean, the high school should have the most, if that was the consideration.
We, before the recent incident, we had four here in this building. But, yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you.
I actually wouldn't mind seeing, because of the way Odysseum is laid out, I actually think there should probably be a third one there.
Just, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
Can we get, so you said that there were, there was sort of statistical significant difference between encounters at different elementary schools? Is that something, is that data that you could share with us? I don't know how you need to like cut it or stand, like...
I've already done it. It's already been done, and I sent it to Julie Dunn last week.
Fantastic. I would be interested in seeing it.
We've got it.
Dr. Seuss?
Actually, I have a question, and this might just reflect my ignorance. I thought that Stratton was also responsive classroom community. And I was wondering if there's, if we're seeing the same kind of effect at Stratton as we see at Hardy?
I'm not too involved. I'm not too involved in the responsive classroom at this time. I know that there is responsive classroom, but my role right now is not part of it. I know the social worker, the principal, there's two social workers, the principal, a classroom teacher, and I think maybe special ed, somebody from the learning center.
I was wondering if we've seen a decrease.
Stratton is another school that's probably closest to Hardy, to be honest with you. It's another lower number. And so what we did is we pulled sort of like the number of students in the building. Stratton is, yeah.
So we're seeing similar, okay.
Absolutely.
And I just have another question. I remember... I remember the craft, when you presented a year ago, or two years ago, we were piloting, but the thought was that it was going to become a mandate.
It did.
It did, okay. So it's a, so this is something we just have to do year after year?
Do it year after year, and it's costly. It's funny, because the state mandated it, and-
I'm sure the state gave us extra money for this.
Well, they said it was, but I can tell you, the little secret is, it's free training. So that's what they give you. Well, we'll train you for free, but we won't cover-
But the staff time is not.
Yeah. And it's a lot of staff time.
Yeah.
It takes at least two weeks pulling students out of various, you know, whether it's going to be the gym class, or wherever they're pulling them out of, but it's, it's, it's timely.
Have we been able to identify kids who are in trouble that we wouldn't have identified otherwise?
We had a couple of positive screens.
Okay.
Very low.
That we might not have been able to identify otherwise.
I can't. We can't even put it, all we can do is say that we've screened a child, that's it. We cannot have any identifiers on anything.
Right.
It's an interesting process, but it's very confidential.
Right.
Right. And we had, we did have a decent amount of parents at the Audison that opted out this year compared to last year. Not a lot, but more than last year. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I would like to echo Ms. Morgan, I'd like to see the data, too. I think it's very interesting.
Yeah.
About Hardy, so.
I can.
That would be-
Could we just ask them to send it to all of us, or send it to Karen for all of us to have?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you. And then, I'm hoping that people, well, I see, Mr. Thielman is down listening to his son do chorus, so he's not here to listen, but the other people in both curriculum and on budget, I hope you're paying attention to the needs that we're going to want to reflect on next year. Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, please.
So, just because you guys are here, and because obviously, you have a sense, there's, in my mind, as a non-medical, not, like person, there's like a tipping point of school enrollment, where you're like, wow, one nurse is like super duper not enough. And I'm imagining that right now, in my, like naivete, that like things are kind of going okay at Pierce, right? Like, there's like, the number of students at Pierce with one nurse is like generally like acceptable.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And, and then there's probably some places that we have where like, it's not so great. And I guess, so I would be interested to hear you talk about that. And the other comment that I wanted to make, and what always concerns me in these situations, is that when we have differing school populations, and we have some buildings that have a lot more students, and the load on those people is more significant, I always fear that we're going to burn those people out faster, and that some of our larger schools are going to be unduly burdened, not only because their nursing staff is seeing more encounters, but because we don't retain those people. And that we have, we end up having this sort of inequitable system, where there are certain schools that are more desirable, because the student load in the population-
Right.
...is lower, which makes a lot of sense, right?
Oh, it's an excellent point.
And that, so that concern, that concerns me, but can you speak to, like, do you have kind of a like sense?
Yeah.
Like, I feel like you must, right? Like, there's something, there's some like magic number.
There is. So, okay, so the state says, well, we want to see one nurse for every four hundred and fifty students in a building. But what that doesn't take into account is any kind of medical acuity. All right. So let's take, for example, Brackett. Brackett's going to have three students with diabetes next year. That's a lot to be managing with other kids that have other issues, medical issues, not to mention all the little cuts and scrapes, and colds and coughs that come in. So we, let me give you an example. Thompson, it's nothing for Christina DiNofrio to see seventy-seven students in one day. Well, that's twice as much as Pierce or Hardy on any given day, twice as much. I mean, she's running circles around us. And at the end of the day, she'll say, do you need anything? I'm like, no, do you need anything? So we do say on days, so we do have a full-time resource nurse that is state-funded. They job-share. We have one person three days a week, one person two days a week. And if they are not needed to cover one of the school's, for whatever reason, meetings, there's a whole bunch of 504 meetings coming up, so they'll, he'll cover, or she, because we have gentlemen and women, covering the office for two hours, three hours. If they're not doing that, we'll absolutely say, does somebody need them for a couple of hours, just so you can catch up on some of your work? So that's the beauty of that role. A lot of towns are actually starting to adopt that. It's, it's a very necessary role. And then at the last minute, if you have someone that, you know, calls you up and says, my kid's sick, I have to leave work, you can send the resource nurse over there to cover, because we don't have extra nurses in the district. We just don't. I would love to see that. That's a big hint. Beauty of being over fifty, you can say whatever you want. But, you know, but, but yes, so we definitely see that. In fact, I just got an email from one of the nurses saying, is there any possible way that you can send somebody at lunch every day? And I'm like, I would love to. And on days that we have an extra resource nurse available, absolutely, but I just can't, you know, I, we just don't have the, we don't have the staffing to do that. So, I mean, and the other thing, too, is next year is our last year with this large grant, then we have to do the RFR again for, for the grant. Hopefully, we'll get it again. It's pretty sizable, and it covers a lot of these positions. But if it does go, I mean, I don't know what we're going to do without that. So yes, we definitely see inequity in terms of what people are doing. And sometimes, for example, at the Pierce, the nurse over there is wonderful, she'll say once in a while, you know, I've got, if you, if you need anything, I don't, every once in a while, she'll say, do you need anything, Dunn? I mean, and that's great, because she knows she's not as busy. We don't get that with all the schools that have the lower numbers, but we do, we do get that. And then Lauren is taking care of all of our diabetic ish, you know, issues, and supporting the nurses with care coordination and that. So, yeah, there's definitely some inequity in terms of job, what people are doing.
So where, like, where is kind of the like magic number where you, so I have two, so I have two, so wait, like, like, or range, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but like some, like four fifty is what the state says, is it really lower than that, is it higher than that? And then the other question I have is, if you could have one more pers-, like, if you got another like body, would, is it better for it to be a resource nurse? Because like, I haven't heard of these people before, but they sound really useful.
Right.
Or is it a, is it like a dedicated nurse?
Um, I mean, ideally, I'd like to see another person in the high school. I'm sure Matt Jenga would like to see another person in the high school, too. It's working right now, but it's, we're sort of on the edge there. Definitely another person would be great, because that person could alleviate somebody's lunches once in a while, just to give them a chance to catch up. I mean, people don't realize this, but a lot of our nurses don't take lunches. I never took a lunch. It's, you just ate as you went, you know? I mean, they're on the teacher's contract, and a few of them understand that very, very closely. They know that they, they're allowed lunch, and they should be, of course they should be. And time off, a few of the nurses will close their door. I think this is great. You do see this in some other districts, they'll close their door for forty-five minutes a day. It's emergencies only. Usually, it's towards the end of the day. Some people do it at the beginning of the day, some people do it at the end. That's another way to catch up. It's, it's more that lunchtime.
Mm-hmm.
Honestly, that's, that's the, yeah, that's, that's the magical time, when everybody comes in, because they're hurt on the playground, they're throwing up. That's when we see a lot of the students with diabetes, because they have to come in and get their blood sugars checked for lunchtime, and, you know, that's the toughest time of the day. But we, I don't know how we could conceivably do that, put somebody in every school for lunch. I don't know how we're going to do that. And, and there are different numbers of diabetics in different schools, too.
Right.
I mean, you know, Brackett's going to have three next year. She could certainly use a little help at lunchtime, absolutely. And Thompson?
Pierce has two.
Pierce has two next year.
Bishop will have two.
Bishop, yeah. So it's getting up there.
Okay. Dr. Seuss?
Oh, I just want to point out that on our list of extra additions, you know, we have some, a little bit of extra money. A nurse at the high school is one of the potentially suggested, not guaranteed, but things that we are considering. And, and I think many committee members have mentioned that it is a high priority, but I'm not promising anything.
You're not getting my hopes up?
I'm just saying, it's, it's on the list. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, great. Thank you very much for coming and sharing your knowledge, and-
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay. Moving on, the AHS, AHS Building Project, with Jim Burrows and Lori Coles.
So as Kay said, my name is Jim Burrows, I'm the Owners Project Manager with Skanska for the high school project. Just as an overview, my, the role of an Owners Project Manager, we basically manage the project from start to finish, every aspect of it, all the way through closeout. We're the primary go-between, between the district and Massachusetts School Building Authority. So that's another primary, primary role we have. So we wear many hats throughout the project, so to define us in one simple term, so we do a lot along the way in the process. So, going to, and part of this presentation, we want to give you an overview of the MSBA process, and basically, how we got to where we are now, kind of bring that up to speed quickly, and then the next steps from here. Because, and before the MSBA process, I know I have to give credit to the school, the school committee, everybody in the community, there was a ton of work done prior to the MSBA. So I just want to recognize that, that, and from that point, when that started, and when we came on, with, just to bring us up to date today. So first of all, the Mass School Building Authority, they are a quasi-governmental agency. They, basically, one penny of every tax dollar of the sales tax goes to a fund. The MSBA manages that fund and distributes it, just distributes it throughout the state. So as being accepted into the MSBA process, you are required to follow these separate steps or modules. So the first being the eligibility period, that's when the statement of interest is issued, which basically lists the needs and deficiencies of the current facility. The MSBA takes those once a year, evaluates them, and then invites certain districts into the, into the program. So the next is Module Two. So that is forming the project team. That's when we are brought on as the Owners Project Manager, and there's procurement process with that. And then the, once we're brought on board, our first order of business is to draft the request for services for the architect, and then issue those findings, review with the building committee, and issue those findings to the Mass, the MSBA Designer Review Panel. And basically, the Designer Review Panel is, reviews all the proposals. There are three representatives at the table from the district. It is voted on, the town, or the district describes which firm they like, and then, then we're off and running. And obviously, with this project, the HMFH was selected. So moving on to the next is the feasibility study. So that's the stage we're in right now. And the feasibility study can be broken into, there's two distinct pieces to it. So I'm just going to hop to the next slide on this and come back to this, but, oh, there we go. So this is Lori, and HMFH's graphic, so I'll run through it, and she'll correct me if I see anything wrong. So the, so basically, the PDP is the first stage of the feasibility study. So, and they're, basically, you're reviewing your existing conditions of your building. And so, and that's for physical conditions, code analysis, educational use capacity. A parallel track with that is the educational visioning, which ultimately, you're getting down to the educational program, which has been, which is approved by this committee. So, and all of that narrows down into selecting the preferred, the preliminary evaluation of alternatives, which you come up with a list of, I think we ended up with eight potential alternatives for addressing the needs of the building. And then that gets pared down to typically, it's different with different districts. In this district, it was four. So, and that was submitted back April 11th. The, the PDP was submitted to the MSBA. And at each phase of this, once feasibility begins, the MSBA has an opportunity, opportunity to comment and respond, and request for additional, and request additional information. So the PDP comments, we just receive back, and we're shuffling through those. The next step of the feasibility study is the Preferred Schematic Report. So that's where you take your four alternatives that you selected in the PDP, and parse those down, evaluate them further, evaluate them further, as how they stack up against the educational program, costs, basically, just evaluating them more efficiently. So that's where you get to your preferred solution. That's your selected option, alternative, you'll hear it said a couple of different ways. So that, the target date for that is in July. So that's, that's the two steps to the feasibility study. So just backing up to, back to the, sorry. Yep, so backing up to this. So once the alternative is selected, we move into what's called schematic design. That's where you're building a more robust design, you're in a more robust estimate. So you're ultimately, at the end of schematic design, you're coming up with what the MSBA calls a project scope and budget, where you have a defined scope of the project, defined budget, that can be then taken to the next step, which is funding of the project. And that's where that is sent to the town for a public vote or override. And then, from there, once that's approved, and the MSBA will issue a project funding agreement. So that locks in, at that stage, that is your effective rate of reimbursement for the project, as well as your total max facility grant, which is basically what the state shared is. And then through, after schematic, we go into detailed design. So, and through detailed design, the, you basically, that's, that's, there are a couple stages within the detailed design as well. There's the design development documents, the sixty percent construction documents, ninety percent construction documents, and then your hundred percent construction documents that are ready for bid. And again, at each phase of this, through schematic, through all the stages of detailed design, things will be shifting, things will be moving as we smoke out issues in the design, further study into the building. And again, the MSBA is, is with us all along, reviewing all these steps. And then, obviously, the next step is construction. And, and again, MSBA will be involved throughout construction, they're usually out on a monthly basis. And then, our team will be there on a daily basis, monitoring construction. So our role, as we move into construction, we're basically at the table every, every construction meeting, and we're kind of morph into more that we are the owner's eyes and ears, making sure that if it is a phased occupied renovation, that we're making sure that the construction team is operating with the understanding that there's an educational environment on the other side of the construction wall. So that, I just wanted to highlight that, that that's a key piece to, and role to what we do. And then, obviously, at the completion of construction, it's, we guide the district into the closeout with the MSBA, which can be, be laborsome. So with that, we will skip ahead to our schedule. So obviously, there's a lot on here. We, this is basically the full schedule from start to finish, all the way through closeout. So some of the highlights, how the schedule is developed is ultimately through the RFS. We understand the district's timeline and their projected vote. So right now, the vote that we are looking at is June of 2019. So then, what we have to back into is MSBA board meetings. MSBA board meetings are every other month, so, and then there's requirements for when the PDP is submitted, when the PSR is submitted, so that's how the- the PDP is submitted, when the PSR is submitted, so that's how the schedule is developed, basically after those two key dates. So, key, key dates coming up are July 11th is when the preferred solution goes into the MSBA. Excuse me. And then, the MSBA has a period of review, they issue review comments, and then on August 29th, the MSBA issues approval, and then we move into schematic. February 22nd, so there's roughly six months of schematic design, so then February 22nd, the schematic documents are issued to the MSBA. And then after that, project scope and budget approval is on April of, April of 2019. And then, the public vote is in June of 2019, with roughly one year of, of detailed design. So, the, the current estimates for construction after that, and again, they're very preliminary, we're still working through the phasing, are between three and six years, but the average is about four, four to four and a half years. And again, we're still going through the phasing, still trying to dial in on that number, so that number still is in flux. So, moving on, something we put together for this presentation is a comparison of projects across the state. Now, I think the caveat that I would put on this is that every site is different, every building need is different, every district is different, so, and all the, all the timelines don't match perfectly, so what we tried to do here was find the best examples that most closely match the high school project as of today. So, and then what we did was, we, in order to true it up with our project, we put 4% escalation, so that's escalation in construction cost per year, that's the current rate, to basically marry it up with our, our timeline. So, right now, Arlington, with a design enrollment of 1,755, the total, total project costs right now, between the four selected alternatives that we selected in the PDP, is between 287 million and 298 million. Somerville High School, which is in, in construction right now, actually going out to bid very shortly, they are a design enrollment of 1,590, with a total project cost escalated to our timeline of roughly 270. Waltham High School is 1,830, and that is new construction, escalated to our timeline is roughly 312 million. Belmont High School, which is currently in schematic, and is an ad renovation, design enrollment of 2,215, escalated to our timeline is roughly 301 million. So again, there's a, a range within all those, but that's kind of, that's basically the most comparable projects across the state. All right, so with that, I think we're going to jump into...
Paul, would you want to introduce?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's up to the chair. So, I just want to give some perspective. My sense is, from knowing the projects, that Somerville is probably more similar to what we're doing than the other three.
Absolutely.
Waltham is new construction on flat land, have they decided where to put it yet?
No.
No, okay. Belmont High, are they going to be sort of building around their existing building and doing this?
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's the...
Yeah.
So, yeah, I would say Somerville is probably the...
Closest match?
Yeah.
But smaller.
But, but smaller. I think they have, and it's a tight site, and basically, they have a, I think they have like a, they have a three-year duration, so, but yeah, it absolutely is probably the closest one. And also, their current estimate is the, their detailed design estimate, so it's obviously more refined than what we have right now, which is, in the PDP stage, the design, the estimate is based on basically best guesses and square footage numbers, not a detailed design, so their estimates are a little more refined at this stage.
Is Skansco also doing Lowell?
Yes.
How would you view us compared to, oh, I, I work for Lowell School Department, so, you know, I'm very much aware of what's going on there.
Yeah.
How would you compare us to them?
So, the, the size and scale of that project is much bigger, obviously, with a population of 3,000 plus.
Design's probably around 3,500, 3,700, yeah.
Yeah, so, and it's also in a tight site, there's challenges on that site, being downtown, and, you know, looping in the freshman academy, and I think, and then, there's national historic, there's state historic, so I think there's lots of pieces and parts with that project, so I think, I think this project is very complex as the building is concerned, I think that project is, is complex for the various parties that are involved in it, so.
The starting nature of the old building and the canal running.
Yeah, and the canal as well, yeah, so, yeah, I think it's, yeah, that is a highly complex project as well.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Hayner.
I'll wait till the end.
You want to wait?
I'll wait.
Were there any big surprises or hardballs in the comments back on the PDP?
No, I, I think there wasn't anything earthshattering, I think they did a very thorough job of reviewing the educational program, they had some questions. I think there, there was, yeah, I, there was nothing that was, you know, popped out, and that was kind of the conversation that Lori and I had as soon as they came out, that nothing earthshattering, I, I think there's some comments that we have to respond to, work with the school department on, but, yeah, nothing.
Great, can you share those through Karen, share those with us through Karen?
Sure.
Great. And then, I noticed that Belmont had to resubmit their PSR, they never said, really said why, but they did miss their meeting. Do we have contingencies in place, if we, if we slipped two months, would we have compressed the design at all, or would we still be?
I, I think if we were...
Till June to complete, complete everything?
Yeah, because right now, we're looking to hit the...
Spring, spring vote, we actually have a window, I think we have a good window for promoting the project and sharing it, so we have some time in between.
And that's, yeah, and that's kind of the key too, is I think what would be shrunk is the time to go to the community and, you know, campaign for the project, I think that time would be shrunk, I think we can adjust our schedules, because we want to maximize that time, obviously, for the district, so.
Thanks. Mr. Hayner?
The designs that are sent forward, can, can we reduce, in other words, I'm looking at the four designs that you're presenting tonight, if there's something that the town decides later it doesn't want, not add to, but take away, is that allowed in MSBA, or are you stuck with what you're going forward with?
Sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Jane Forth.
I guess, I have a question, do we, are we going to look at these four designs again for the second or third time tonight, I'm asking?
I assume so.
Okay, I, I have a question, it's prevalent through all four designs, I'll wait till the end to ask that question.
Let me, I'm going to, I should have done it more of an intro before we started this, so let me, as long as we're asking questions, let me do that now. So, I'm a little bit behind, but my understanding, the purpose of having this presentation tonight was to give the committee and the public an overview and an update on the project. We felt it's important, this is speaking with my building committee hat on now, we felt it's important for everyone to understand what's happened up to date, and also that we have a really big decision coming up. We are very much hoping that people will come to our community forum, which will be held on June 4th at Town Hall, this is going to be an opportunity for the public, everyone, to give feedback on the designs, and also design aspects, it's not just going to be pick one of four or something, it's going to be, we're still working out exactly how to do it, but you're going to get to say, I like this aspect of this design, and, and this will help, no matter which design is picked, it'll help shape that into the school that we want, let me just finish, I'm almost done. And, the building committee will then take the feedback that we hear at the forum, as well as a whole bunch of other things, it's not, it's not a popularity contest, you're not going to be voting on your things. And, will take all of this information, and then design, use it to make their decision on which of the four designs will be submitted for the preferred design option. So, that's why they're here, we are going to see the four things again, and this is what we're trying, and I'm trying to do, is make sure you folks have as much chance to make your ideas known as possible, and also for our audience to understand what's happening and that this is coming. So, Mr. Hayner?
I will wait till the end of the presentation, thank you.
So, yeah, so the next piece is the alternatives, so I guess if there's any questions on the all, the process or anything I presented, we can discuss that.
Then I have a...
Okay.
So, just a couple of small questions, so we don't go out to bid for the person, the company doing the construction until after the detailed designs are done?
No.
Or do, do we, I know that it's this new thing that the designer and the construction people work together earlier on?
Technically, with a project of this size, scale, and complexity, it will likely be a construction manager.
Okay.
Or it's hard bid, where that's, that would be the method. So, right now, it's still not approved, but likely this project will be construction manager, so at the beginning stages of detailed design, the procurement of the construction manager would come on, would happen, and then, they would have pre-construction services, so we would have a construction manager onboard throughout detailed design.
So, starting the fall of 2019 type of thing? Okay.
Yeah, so that they can, you know, each stage, the DDs, the 60%, 90%, they're commenting.
Good, okay.
And then that also gives the opportunity for the, for us to issue early packages of scopes, so that it just basically expedites, can expedite the project.
Okay. And I just have one more small question. So, I understand a little bit about your role more, which is great, are you also the person who is sort of community facing, so during the construction, if people have concerns, is that sort of your role, or is that somebody else's role?
So, yeah, we sit on the, the building committee communications subcommittee, so we deal with, you know, any concerns that come in from the community, we can craft responses and all that, but yeah, that's a primary role.
Got it.
I think the face of that role is typically the community, the communication subcommittee, but we're, we're playing an active role in that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
I think he wanted you to change your mic.
Okay.
Okay. Just, let me ask one question for clarity, I know that the school committee is, was required process-wise to vote on the education plan before we could move forward, are there other votes that the school committee is required to take over the next few months to move the project forward?
Not, not as far as MSBA goes.
No, not for MSBA.
It would just be whether there's a town, you know, requirement here, but...
Okay, I think there was some concern whether, whether we had to vote on the PSR, but it's just the building committee that votes on the PSR.
Correct.
Okay. So we've done our job.
Correct.
So far, okay, great. So, we'll let you continue.
Okay. Yeah, so like I said, we will move on to the alternatives.
Thank you all. I'll try to be relatively quick, because I know you're familiar with them, and just give the highlights, so that you all can have more time with answering questions, and we can always flip back and forth between them. So we did narrow down to four alternatives, two of them are what I would call renovation addition, and they're retaining Fusco, the building we're in now, in the central portion, Column House, where the columns are, and the clock tower, two are all new. So, the alternative number one, sort of keeps all of the front green, it gives you the same sort of impression you've had to date the history of this building, again, retains both Fusco and Column House, and it's building a six-story additions at the back of the building. And, you know, we've sort of, we've provided little diagrams here, they're not designed, they're just giving you a sense of scale, and relationship to other buildings that are here. There's been a number of discussions with the building committee, you're going to see different numbers of parking, since this was put out, the building committee has settled on a goal of 250 spaces, so that is something that would happen in all four of them, so don't be hung up on the fact that different numbers are happening in these different diagrams. So, a lot of what we've been thinking about is how we enter the building, the various different programs in the building, and that they need separate entrances, separate drop-offs, pickup, thinking about outdoor spaces for the school, whether it's an outdoor gathering, amphitheater, green roof, which has a lot of potential of what that could be as a teaching space, and things like that, so a lot of that is sort of elements and components that you would see in all of these options. So the site diagram here is, again, very, it looks very familiar up front, we're sort of moving the, the loop road a little bit to provide more parking, and so on around the building. The other thing that's been asked a lot is currently, there is a loop circulation around this building, but we all know it's relatively dysfunctional in terms of it being really kind of a single lane. It works because it's required for a fire lane, so it's necessary, but we would be proposing creating more of a two-way traffic, a better flow. It's hard for you all to see on this, so I'll point to it, this box right here is the red gem now, the back of the building, so we are, in all of our diagrams and all of our planning, bringing back, you know, pulling the building back from the site, the green space at the back, which will give us more fluidity, again, with traffic flow and moving around the building. The floor plans, I won't get into too, too much detail, but one other sort of commonality between all the diagrams is that your central elements are your cafeteria and your library, and that those are sort of the core elements at the center of the building, with academic spinning around it in different arrangements. So, the other piece that is new, or would be, will be new in the future, is instead of having two floors below the front entrance, all of the diagrams are now showing one floor below the front entrance, and this is for a couple of different reasons. The first reason why we really wanted to do it, before, we had a really good reason to do it, is that the floor-to-floor levels are not very gracious, if you've been in the cafeteria, I don't have to say much more. But also, as we've done more investigations about the contaminations on the site, one of the approaches that we are very likely going to do, and that's what we're planning for, is we are going to cap the site, so not unlike what you're used to, has happened here back in '04, '05 with the back of the site, but that will bring up the grade about four feet. And so, between those two things, we're basically, we'll have one lower level, that's approximately 20 feet floor-to-floor, which is a nice level, a nice height for certainly cafeteria and other spaces. So, everyone will have to get used to entering on the second floor, not the third floor, that will be the big trick for everyone.
Trauma.
Confused already, right?
Yeah.
And so, but, but otherwise, what the other, the other goals that you're going to see in, consistent in this one and the other ones, is the concept of a humanities wing and a steam wing. And so, there's been a lot of discussion about interdisciplinary, and the truth of the matter is, is that, as you all know, I'm telling you something you all know, Arlington High School is a very strong departmental, but in fact, the departments work together, so they're interdisciplinary, they don't have to be side-by-side to work together, this building, as it is now, is a sprawling building, and they all manage to still work together and connect, and make their way down to the basement, to the maker space, and so on. So our goal is really to make their jobs easier, and make the relationships and the proximities a lot closer, a more compact building footprint, so that all of this communication that's already happening can be strengthened. And so, again, we're looking at, at two wings, one side would be the steam wing, the other side will be the, the humanities, the steam wing will include the mass, the sciences, the maker, and the arts, and all the other general classrooms... the other general classrooms, and some specialty spatial programs, you're very familiar with the program, will also occur there. And so that's, in this, in this case, we are reusing Fusco. We would be able to retain the pit, retain old hall. Again, if we don't keep Fusco, those spaces go away. And then we have all of the different special ed programs that are distributed throughout. And alternative number two, this takes the approach that says, if we build something out front, we create a sort of what we call swing space in terms of constructability during the different phases, to help shorten the construction. The other thing that we've done a lot of thinking about and looking at, and the front green is an incredible asset for the entire community. It's a one-of-a-kind, it's the largest open space on Mass Ave for the stretch of Arlington, and we all appreciate that. But it's highly underutilized, as it is right now. And so we believe that, you know, programming it, just like you program the inside of the building, programming the outside of the building actually strengthens its uses and gives more purpose to the different spaces. So it's such a large green, that it still would be a large green even if we build out front. So people have made these comments, the building isn't necessarily a box. So this is not about design, this is about programming, and how you use the site, and how things might work and flow. Design will come later. So in looking at these, again, we've got a humanities wing, we have a steam wing. In this case, Fusco actually is sort of blocked in on two sides, and so you're seeing the side of Fusco. And again, you're retaining the different program spaces that exist there now, would be retained. We have a performing arts wing and athletics to the back, which is nice for flow. One thing that was, became a big conversation piece is, we labeled the back "community entrance." That does not mean the community can't come in the front. What we were trying to sort of show or think about is, this is such a large site, that you want to make two main entrances. Whether one is only used during the school day, and they're both used at night, or how that, it provides that flexibility for the school department to decide how to use them. But rather than have one main entrance for such a large complex, and everything else is back of the house and not welcoming, this is, this is a goal of really making two, you know, this large site and this large building welcoming in both directions. So, community can come in the front door, absolutely. And we've actually talked about other things which we haven't delved into, but actually making connections. Currently, there's only one connection front-to-back along Schuler Court, but is there a possibility of getting a pedestrian, wouldn't be a car, I'm not going to own up to that, but a pedestrian connection along the eastern side of the building, front-to-back? There's quite a big drop-off, so we're going to come up with something that people don't actually have to repel down the side of the retaining wall. And so the site diagram, again, I just want to point out, because it's hard to see, but it's important to see, this, this back here is Downs and the red gym. So again, we're, we're gaining site space to use, and better organize what we have for amenities on the site. And so again, you're sort of seeing the, the front green. There's been a lot of conversations that came up in the open forums, you know, what would it be like not to have cars in the front of the high school? How would that function? I mean, everyone can sort of say, well, that'd be nice not to have cars, but will it function? And looking at that, and how the drop-off sequence work and all, and all of that, certainly, as you know, a lot of students do come by the MBTA bus, which is, the stops are right there. So we're looking through all of that as we continue on. Again, would be a goal of 250 parking spaces. Alternative number three's, two's floor plans. Again, not too much detail, but we have the cafeteria at the lower level. This diagram here was showing the concept of possibly having structured parking under the building, if it's needed, again, as a comparison between the options. But again, you'd have administration at the entry level, and above that would be, we have more administration in the library. We're looking at different places for green roofs, all the pieces. And number three, so number three is all new. I always put the caveat in that where appropriate and possible, we like to use, reuse historic elements. So that's something that's on the table. You have 18-foot columns out in front of the building, and so is there some way that they would be incorporated or other elements? So just thinking about that is possible, but, but in effect, all new. Construction, again, two wings out front, the main entry here, a rear entry to the building. In this, in this diagram, the athletics and PEs to one side, and the performances to the other side in the back. But you're basically have that central hub of cafeteria and the library space. There we go. And this one really actually, it's really compact. Again, I wish I could really show you, you know, we're, the back of the building is at the front side of the north courtyard, the near side of the front courtyard. So basically from that, so the back of, you know, sort of this complex backwards would be open for development in this whole area here. So it's very similar in a lot of ways, except for we're, we're really starting to think about different types of outdoor spaces. So not only what could happen at a green roof level, but having, having sort of, I sort of always call them open-ended courtyard, right? A courtyard is when all four sides are closed, but when you actually have an open-ended, you know, it's, it still has that feel of a contained space, but certainly an area you can do different things. In this case here, because this side is the steam wing, this, this courtyard would be well-used between the arts and the makers, and the different things that they would be, projects they could be working on there. This side over here is the humanities, it's between the humanities and the performing arts. Maybe you're creating an outdoor amphitheater, you know, which doesn't, can be used as a classroom, can be used in many different ways, as well as for smaller performances. We did hear one comment once upon a time, just from seeing the graphics without the benefit of a presentation, that what do we need an amphitheater for? We need, we need a real theater. You're getting one of those, too. A very nice one, inside the building, so that we want indoors and possibly one outdoors. And so again, the floor plans are really pretty straightforward. The, the front portion that you see from Mass Ave is all of your academic spaces, and then the rear portfor, the rear portion is all the different community spaces, the athletics and the performing arts. And the last one is an all-new construction, and this one is proposed on the front green. And because it's constrained between Mass Ave and the existing school building that needs to stay up and running, and we're talking about 400-plus thousand square feet, it is six stories at the front of the building. And generally, how it's laid out, or the concept in its compact form, is that the gymnasium and the auditorium are plugged in centrally, so that they're being wrapped by all the spaces that need windows. And so that's really the diagram that we're working with. We do have the similar concept with the central portion, where, in this case, you'd walk in, and the cafeteria would be there, and then you would go up, and the library would be there. And again, we're working with the concept that steam is in one side, and humanities on the other side. This one right here, again, just an initial diagram, what we immediately realized was, you know, when you built up here and you take down the building here, you've got a 20-foot drop. And the reality is, is we need to have accessible drop-off, accessible parking, and ways to get to and from the building. So the proposal is at least a first tier of parking slash drop-off would be raised up to align with the front of the building, if you think about it that way, align with what you consider Mass Ave, so that you actually have an accessible drop-off. So this, this certainly provides a lot of open space to the back of the site, and zero open space at the front of the site. So it's a trade-off. But the back of the site, as you can see, you know, we've got the possibility of additional fields, as well as plenty of parking. And so this is the, just the footprints of the, of the building. Again, you can get the sense of where we're at here. Since, since this diagram, we've worked on it even more to try to ensure that it could be one phase. I believe that is one of the main appeals of this project, is that the existing schools can stay up and running, and the new building could be built. But in order to do that, you actually have to have a little bit of space for the contractor to work, they like to have a little bit of room to the building. And in addition to that, you know, there's, there's exits out the front of this building that are required when you have 2,000 people in the building. So, so how this is shown here, we've tightened it up a little bit, and really moved the front of the building to the sidewalk. And so the comparison for you on that is, you've got a building right here going up on the sidewalk, it's three stories or four, I just drove by it, but whatever, three stories. So that relationship would be what we would have to do to get a minimum of 20 feet from the back of the proposed new building and the front of the existing building to, to make that possible. So that's, you know, steps that we're working on since the last time we did these pieces. Okay, questions?
Mr. Hager.
Two things. One, I'm just sharing, I know these are pictures to give perspective, but all your, all four of them have a parking lot, as you look at it to the right. That's private property, so I don't want you people to consider it.
No, no.
We're not, we're not on the, that's CVS's, we're not on the...
I, I understand it. That, those parking lots, correct me if I'm wrong.
Which one are you, do you know which...
That's just for orientation. It's just for orienting people on the side.
If it's just for orienta, I'm just sharing it. Number three shows our parking lot, and one more up.
Three, this is the site.
Yeah, well, go up to the next, I'm talking about the next picture.
I'm going, I'm going.
Right there. Our parking lot's to the, right next to the humanities, CVS is to the right.
Correct.
And all the subsequent, all the other drawings have CVS. It's a minor thing.
See, I can't do anything, this is, this is existing conditions.
Right, I understand, I understand.
Not ours, not ours.
Okay. The other thing, I would ask our members on the building committee that, to be able to, to deal with the public and justify any spaces that are not getting state funding, that in the, the, one example is the early childhood, which I have no problem putting in this, in getting, the other part is the...
Getting state funding.
Pardon me?
That's getting state funding.
It's special education.
The special education part, not the regular early childhood.
It's only a special education program.
It is? Okay, I was told way back when by you that it wasn't. Misunderstood, I misunderstood, I'll tell you.
No, but I think your point's...
The one I'm really concerned about is the administration offices. I'm not saying we don't need them, I'm just asking that you, that we have, be able to justify this to the public for the cost. Because there are other considerations in the town for where the administration may be going in the future. That's all. Thank you.
So I just, you know, we're certainly going to explain to the public any spaces that won't be reimbursed by the state. So we'll definitely make sure that's clear to people, and why, why it's part of the project.
I personally think the administration should be outside of the education buildings. It had been up until about 15, 20 years ago, when the building existed out front, there was a house out front, that, that was the whole school. And it had, it was dedicated just for that, for the public to be able to enter and not interfere with the education programs that were going on. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
So I had a question about, so I understand alternative one, I personally don't have any attachment to the historical elements, but that's my opinion, which is fine. But, so when we go to alternative two, we've got Fusco sort of stuck. I see it as sort of being stuck between this new humanities and whatever's behind it. And I guess, so my first question is, why would we keep it if we're not going to show it? I mean, I'm not being difficult, I'm just like, I'm like, why would we keep it if we're going to like, like, stick it? I don't know what a nice way, like, gently place it in between these two buildings? I don't care, whatever. So, because then when I see in alternative three, there are some similarities between alternative two and three, in that, but in three, you've chosen to put PE where Fusco is? And I'm assuming there's a reason for that, that it's not on the other side, right? That there's, there's some rationale for having PE there, but in keeping Fusco, we couldn't put PE there if we were going to keep it? Am I making, kind of making sense?
Yeah.
So can, can you speak to, to why we would keep Fusco and gently place it between new construction?
So I'll say two things. First of all, the, the goal of narrowing down to alternatives is that they're different. It doesn't mean that every component of everything is like the exact thing you want, but that you're comparing, okay? And so I'd say, I'd say, I'll give you two reasons. The pit, old hall. And they're two heavily-used spaces that you're not recreating under MSBA. So you would be paying to renovate them on your own dime, but you would just be renovating them in their existing configuration. So, so that was part of the driver of why we said, well, let's do one that keeps it in the mix, and then, then the others that do not keep it in the mix. And so your question about the gym, I wasn't quite clear, but the gym is, so, so again, as I was showing, it's a really narrow footprint now. So rather than, and one of the other options, the gym and the performing are on the same side, but then they go out farther, in the back of the site. The idea is, if Fusco isn't there, and we've got enough academic all squared away up front, we can balance the gym on one side, auditorium on the other, cafeteria in the middle. I would say that it's becoming more and more and more common in our, our designs, that the cafeteria actually acts as a lobby and breakout space, when you've got 900 people spilling from the, you're not creating a special lobby for them, there's a giant cafeteria right there for them to spill out into. So having that as a central hub between the two. And I would just say one more thing, it might be a smidgen closer to the athletic fields, but that's, you know, so there's, you know, as opposed to left or right, that's, in my mind, to the left is a little closer to the fields.
Okay. Can I ask my second question?
Sure.
Do you, do you know about, so we, we saw all of these comp, sort of comparable other projects, are any of them reusing historic elements, or are they mostly, I mean, some of them are renovations, but they don't have these, I, I get, like, they don't have these pieces that they're, they're trying to retain, or they are?
They're not my projects, I don't know.
Sorry.
I can answer, several dozen.
Yeah, there's different, there's different reasons. So in Belmont, they wanted to keep their fieldhouse. So they're keeping their fieldhouse and their pool, and tearing down everything else. In, in Somerville, there are some historic elements, and also the, the way the site is, it wouldn't, they are keeping some buildings and building a lot of new, new infill around them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just a clarification, on the Fusco, it's over 100 years old. It's the building that we've had the most continual renovations and fixings, the, in going with it. Is it feasible, cost-effective to renovate this building?
So that was all part of our existing conditions assessment, and part of the decision to keep it. And, and it is actually your better building here, which I know is, you know, it makes people kind of go, really? You know, we've got buildings from the, from the early 80s, but...
I mean, when you go down to the pit on a warm day, it is...
Well, we're talking about full, you know, mechanical systems, and new windows, and new, you know, the, everything that would make it energy-efficient and environmentally-friendly. You know, there's always this, this trade-off.
It is cost-efficient to do it, rather than building new construction.
Well, that's part of the assessments that we've been doing. And, and again, it has good floor-to-floor, and it's poss, you know, so it has all the hallmarks that make it viable to keep, and so it's just, it's just how it plays out in, with all the other options that we're weighing.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Seuss.
Just a comment and a question. So the comment is, one of the things that really surprised me when I was part of the 60-person, and I'm not sure what it's called anymore.
Envisioning.
Envisioning. Were, how many teachers were talking about feeling siloed? And I know that you've mentioned twice that teachers are interacting, and I believe that. But I also know that good architecture can make teachers not feel siloed.
Yeah.
And so I think that, just to go back and sort of read through those comments from teachers, and realize that, that they do think of it as a concern, and that, you know, architecturally, we could potentially help solve that concern.
My, my response to that is, a lot of that comes from this building. Because, because when you're on the fourth or fifth floor of this building, you're up here, and you've got to go down and get to everybody else.
Right.
And they've got to go out of their way to come up to get to you.
Right.
And so what we're talking about is programs and spaces all on the same floors. They're crisscrossing in hallways and everything else. So it isn't, you know, and I've literally had conversations with several world language teachers, which are right below us, and that's exactly what they say, same with, same with the ELI, ELI teachers.
Right, interesting, yeah.
So it's just because of the fact that they're not only far apart in horizontal, but then they're up, and they're in their own little bubble without anybody connecting to them. So...
Sorry, I have a question as well. So my que... So my question is, you sort of indicated this one, I just wanna check and see if this is right. If somebody really likes, say, alternative two, but they really like one feature from alternative three, is there a way for, in the future designs, for a particular feature that's not in the alternative that's chosen to be sort of integrated? For example, like the courtyard or something?
Possibly, not knowing what it is, but yeah, yeah.
So, okay, so it's not that, you know, these are the only features we get if we pick alternative two and we, you know, that fabulous feature in the other alternative, we can't possibly integrate.
Right, right, yeah.
We could in the future, okay.
Yeah, as long as it's not, you know, a helipad. A helipad or some other feature, you know, so yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay, great, okay, thank you.
Let me, I'm gonna cut to you just a moment. I just wanted to say, what you were talking about with the education, what Dr. Seuss was asking about how people feeling siloed and stuff, that gets to the ed visioning and the fact that one of the criteria that we're judging all of the different designs on is how well they map to the guiding principles and things, and that includes elements, just what you spoke about. So they're all being looked at, and whether they make people feel siloed or, not maybe in so many words, but that's, that's the concept, that, one of the concepts that they're being judged against. And I also wonder if you could just quickly run through, I know that we're going to have traffic studies that are coming in, and if, what else are we getting soon that's going to be part of the decision making for going from four to one?
I think the traffic study is actually one of the biggest ones, and they're, they're doing things fast and furious before everyone disappears for summer break. We'll have more information regarding the geotechnical or structural purposes. I think we feel pretty comfortable with the information we already had in terms of from historic, but what they've done on purpose is go around the building where we might be building to double check. So we'll have that before we make our final decision. Am I missing anything?
I would just say, we're basically gonna go back to the PDP estimates and start to refine them based on the phasing that we land on, anything from the traffic studies and some of these other things that we're doing, so.
So we're also looking at phasing, I mean, phasing as well as, 'cause that, I mean, this is something I'm trying to bring out for people who aren't.
Yeah.
Going to the meetings every time, so it's phasing, traffic. We're looking at the circulation in terms of what the students are gonna be walking from going class to class and how they compare over the different alternatives.
Yep, absolutely.
And, yeah, so, Mr. Slickman.
Yeah, so the other thing that we haven't mentioned, I'm just sort of curious on, I know at the beginning of the process, we were talking about what really wonderful things we could do to make this an energy efficient building, and maybe even go beyond anything we've done, thinking about the possibility of even going to geothermal. What has, what's been the thoughts and discussion about that so far, and then maybe in analysis, the cost benefit down the road?
So you're right on topic. We've just formulated the Subcommittee for Sustainability out of the Building Committee, and so we'll have our first meeting in the beginning of June. So more to report from that, but it'll be a lot of discussion about what's possible. In terms of cost benefit analysis and getting into that, those will be in later stages, stages as we go. It's really at this point, it's about goal setting and understanding what we're trying to do and what's, first of all, what's possible. If there's something that's not possible, we're gonna move on and think about other things, but it's, it's at that stage now.
So I think it tremendously benefits everybody. This building, I'm sure, it costs a fortune in, in, in energy.
Yeah.
And that even if we raise the price of the construction of the building, if, because we're gonna be paying it off over time, we could be looking at considerable savings to the taxpayers going down the road while we're paying off the bonds, and certainly more after the bonds are paid off for this building, if we do something really state of the art and go and make this as self-sustainable as possible.
Right, right. Anyone? Mr. Carden.
Okay, so I'm glad Ms. Elmer's back for this. So the one, in looking at the alternatives in more detail, the one flaw I see in alternative three is that the special education programs are off to the side. The only way to get to them, for them to get to the core, core areas are down a long hallway and through the library, and that just seems like a fatal flaw.
And it was, and it's no longer like that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. So, anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Thielman, do you wanna add anything about?
Well, the, you know, I would just encourage you to, this might have been said before I got here, but the, you know, there's a forum on June 4th, Monday, June 4th, and the more people that go to the forum and give us input, the better. And we're meeting throughout the month of June, and we're gonna have, we have two meetings scheduled at the end of the month of June, so that there's enough time to have a long discussion one night, and then hopefully concluding discussion the other night to pick the alternative that we're gonna submit to the state. And so everyone's welcome to come, give input. If you have a preference, you know, and you wanna, you know, send an email to the group, to the whole committee, you're welcome to do that. If you kinda have a, you know, reason for why we should pick one alternative or the other, it's good, it's better to hear it earlier.
Yeah. We, I'd also add that while we think it's better if people come to the forum, because you get the whole context and then the questions make more sense, we are arranging for a feedback form, which will be available a couple days afterwards, and people will, it'll have some of the information that's presented at the forum and questions, so you would be able to give your input, but.
Yeah, and just, you know, one other thing that has come up, we, we are mindful of what this costs, we are trying our best to make sure we maximize the state reimbursement, and, and we wanna minimize disruption, and it, well, there won't be any disruption in student learning, they will be learning someplace, so it's important for people to understand. They will be learning someplace, we just don't know where yet, but we wanna make the disruption as minimal as possible. So we're, so different people have come to the committee and have spoken during public participation, which is wonderful, and their input's always great, so, but we're, you know, we're mindful of all the things that the people are mindful, that some of our guests have been mindful of as well.
Mr. Hainer.
Do we have any idea of a guess number of what percentage we're gonna be eligible for? Autumn number, maybe?
No, I don't think it, you know, I think, Jim, do you wanna, I mean.
Go talk about other schools.
As of right now, it's in the ballpark of 40%. We really won't know.
Yeah.
Until the completion of the states.
Okay, better than I thought. Well, no, no, don't guarantee, I understand that.
No, but that's, you wanna clarify?
Ben Lowery.
Well, I just, you know, I hate being the bearer of bad news, but I'd rather say it sooner rather than later. And so, you know, there's a calculation and a formula that develops, that's developed, very straightforward, it comes up with a percentage. MSBA does have a number of things that are ineligible and/or caps to either costs of things, the cost of construction per square foot, which is not what the cost of construction per square foot is anymore, to percentage of site development, and I think we all know that we have a pretty complex site with the contaminated soils. So the terminology that maybe not everyone's crazy about is the effective reimbursement rate, and we don't know what that is. It could be as low as 30%. So we're, you know, we're sort of working through that range, and we just, you know, we know that people will take a number and run with it, and we just wanna be cautionary that people understand that any percentage is still a lot of money, and it's still a benefit to the, to the community to help build this really important project, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we're going to receive a significant amount of public funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. What that number is, we don't know yet, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a significant, we couldn't do the project without it.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
And is there, I had heard at one point, just talking about this reimbursement rate and what is and isn't gonna be reimbursed, how that, you know, how that plays out when we actually ask the voters about that? Is it all gonna, we can group it all into one big question and do the whole thing all in one?
Yeah, yeah.
Up or down?
So you'll, but you'll have the math, you'll know what the number is. I mean, it's, it's, so they'll know what they're voting for.
Right, but we won't have to break out.
No.
Any pieces that aren't reimbursed.
No.
Into a separate question.
No.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else? Anyone? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much for coming and for your presentation.
We meet, we meet next on Tuesday night, the 29th.
We meet on Tuesday night.
At 6:00 PM here in this room.
Yes.
So come on by.
Great.
It's always a good time.
Thank you, well, have a good night.
Very efficient chairman there.
Just roll it along.
Okay. Moving on, monthly financial.
Thank you. So you probably have noticed in the report, there hasn't been much of a change since last month. Still continue to get some purchase requests from principals and curriculum leaders, and we continue to get approval to liquidate purchase orders, so stuff that we had some money left over and we continue to close them, that will, that has continued throughout May and will continue throughout the end of the year. So there hasn't really been, you see that the balance is just, just under $3,000, so not much changed from last month, but like I said, it's mostly because, you know, as we get new purchases, we're trying to offset them by, by closing POs of similar amounts. And there is one area in the grants, you may have noticed that, which is customary this time of year, in the entitlement grants, you get notified that there's some leftover monies that, that other districts didn't spend, so they, they add them, you know, prorated throughout all the entitlement grants. So there's a little bit of, you know, a couple hundred dollars in Title I that goes up, you know, $150 or $149 in Title II-A, and then $7,800 in IDEA grant. And we just added into the lines for professional development because we're still trying to chase that $50,000 that, the grant that, the specially improvement grant that has gone away, so. You may have noticed that the revenue and expense lines in those three grants have, have been adjusted a little bit to reflect that, and in revolving accounts, we continue to collect the money and spend it as expected. We do, we do continue to have three funds that are over their revenue estimate already, so we've just been watching them to make sure that's legit, and if, if so, and it seems like that's gonna be there, maybe we would make a recommendation in the fall to adjust the revenue and expense line in those, but probably a little too early to tell. And overall, though, like I said, the report hasn't really changed much. I didn't expect it would in April, and probably the same for May, and we're just trying to make sure we land the plane in a positive number.
And, Mr. Hainer?
Is there any hope that the elevator will not be a red line item every year going forward? We have repairs on it, are they just keeping, keeping it going, I guess?
Well, you know, it has its ups and downs.
Very nice.
Oh, God. Been waiting for 15 years to use that.
You want to tease that for a while?
Very nice. I mean, I've, I've just.
Well, we're hopeful when we build a new school, this is where we spend all the money, here.
I mean, each year seems to be in the hole every year.
Yep.
I'm just, I know we have to have it, and, thank you. Up and down.
Dr. Seuss.
So things are, seem like they're going really well, and I was just wondering if you just could give a, more of a narrative of what have been, say, our biggest surprises, both positive and negative this year?
Snow removal, biggest surprise. Substitutes, biggest surprise, both of the negative.
Yep.
Substitutes getting a lot better. Was, you might remember, my panic in the first meeting has subsided, and it's much less than I thought it was.
For substitutes.
And the biggest gain we have is that we, we budget an amount for legal services and legal settlements that if we didn't have that, we would, would be in a deficit.
Got it, okay, great, thanks.
Anything?
The grant that Ms. Franchi was talking about, the, for nurses.
Yeah, essential school health.
Is it not, so that's not reflected in our regular, in our grants, so it is just kept separately?
Yeah, you know what? I don't, I don't know why it isn't, but I will make sure we get that. I think it's probably just because we've never had it in the budget book.
Historically, yeah.
But that needs to be in there.
Just so we know, if it does go away, it sounds like we're in our last year, then that's something we're gonna need to fund, so useful to have that information. Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Nope? Okay, moving on, thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
So yes, I will be giving the superintendent's report today in Dr. Bodie's absence. So just as, as a follow up with some, the recent event at the high school, I just would like, you know, we would like to thank the various community members, partnerships that helped with some of the aspects of resolving or addressing the event, and that would be the Arlington Police Department, the Town of Arlington, the Arlington Human Rights Commission, the Rainbow Commission, and the Board of Health. They're very instrumental, and they met with representatives from the school district in order to consider some of the options as it related to disciplined legal action and community responses. Dr. Jangar also sent a letter regarding the incident on, to the Arlington High School Community on Monday, so just wanna recognize those community partners. Also, on a more positive note, I was at Dallin today, and they had Science Day at Dallin, and the Science Day includes 15 interactive science demonstration that are led by volunteer scientists, which showed students different ways science is used across many careers. At each station, students were given an opportunity to observe, ask questions, explore and interact. Students explored topics like triboelectric forces, nano capsules, 3D printing, and building molecules from atoms. And one extra bonus or benefit of this day, each one of the scientists that participate is a parent or grandparent of a Dallin student. And tonight at Dallin, families will come to see over 50 or about 50 student-created displays for their second annual STEAM Engineering Expo, and some of the projects include how can we convince people to use solar panels to power electric cars as it would save money, use less gas, and cause less pollution, and how will our super catcher fly swatter keep the fly alive and send it out of the house? And so that is just mentioned, some of the projects, and so I'd just like to highlight that, that it was Science Day at Dallin and some of the events that are going on also tonight as part of that event. Also would like to give an update on our kindergarten enrollment. We're up to 556 registered kindergarten students, and I'd like to let the community know that, you know, we're aware of the constant additions of kindergarten students, and that we are considering all the, the impact that it's gonna have on staffing and space, and so we're just staying closely, making, you know, making sure that we're attending to that very closely. There's also, tonight there, there was, at 4:30, there was a exhibition of the K2, K through 12 art, artwork from all of the schools at the Town Hall. I was able to also stop by there, it was very nicely populated, and, you know, just the talented, you know, the, the amount of talent that we have from our Fine Arts Department, the visual art is just exceptional. So I just wanna thank David Ardito, our Art Director of Fine Arts, for putting that together, and also all of the talented and passionate art teachers that we have in the district that help promote our art programming here in Arlington. It was awesome display. And I would like to highlight the fact that we have over almost 200 staff members trained in youth mental health first aid in the district, and that, and as we noted earlier in earlier meetings, that it's also part of an AEF grant that we received in order to make this training happen, so we'd just like to continue to thank the AEF for their support, and that we have more training opportunities that are going to be offered this summer that staff can still be a part of, so that's going very well. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Any questions about anything? No? Just raised eyebrows at the 5:56?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have the consent agenda. All items listed below, listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be not, no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant dated 5/10/2018, number 18230, total warrant amount $462,459. Approval of minutes, school committee minutes of May 10th, 2018, and no, no trip. So motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. And now we have policy CBI evaluation of the superintendent. And I think that's coming from actually curriculum.
Yeah, well, yeah, so an odd place for it to come from, but, so the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Subcommittee met on Friday afternoon and we heard a number of different things, but one of the things that the superintendent wanted us to, to talk about was, she, she pointed out, Kathy pointed out that we, she submits her goals to us every year by May 15th. We don't approve them until sometime in June. I'm sorry, the district's goal, she submits the district's goals. And she said at least this year, and, and there may have been years in the past where the specifics about the implementation of the goals were clarified over the course of the summer by the faculty and the staff. And they wanted time to figure out the action items, figure out the owners of all the work, and then report back to us in September. And so I said, well, I would work with Kathy to come up with a proposed modification to policy CBI that I would put forward to the full committee for a first read if the committee was comfortable with it, or making code of policies and procedures and we could talk about it there. But the bottom line is, is that what this does is it codifies our, our current practice. That's all it does. It codifies our current practice. The superintendent submits a document every year by May 15th. We have discussions. We approve it sometime in May or, or June. And the superintendent has come back on the pa, hasn't always, but sometimes has come back in the past with a comprehensive plan for the implementation of the goal objectives. The other thing is that we don't, we've never put in the policy that what the, the district actually does is they, they develop goal objectives for, that are, that are consistent with policy BAE, which is the overarching goals of the district. And so that's the modification, and I can take questions.
Okay. Mr. Hainer?
I support the changes. I think they, they make sense going through, but I would ask the committee to please clarify for the oldest person on this committee, what is the dates that the superintendent to be evaluated from? July 1st through June 30th, or from right after we evaluate her till the next year in November we evaluate her? Because the way this is written right now, it implies that we would be looking at last year's MCAS scores to evaluate her in November. And that is not, one of the reasons we do it in November is to get the MCAS scores for the current, the latest MCAS scores. That's one thing. The other part is, as it states in the opening paragraph, that the district goals and the superintendent's goals usually are reflective of each other. Does this, does this mean on, by June 30th this year, if we accept the district goals, those will be the superintendent's goals going forward, or will there be some delineation? These are just questions that I would ask Jeff to bring back to her.
Well, okay.
You may know the answer now.
So in the, in the policy, if you go to the last bullet, it says by June, June 30th each year, the superintendent shall present his or her yearly goals to the school committee for approval for the new fiscal year. That's June, June, July 1 through June 30.
Right.
And the school committee superintendent shall agree by which standards, indicators, and elements of the model rubric for superintendents shall be measured for the next fiscal year. So in, by June 30th, she submits goals and measures for the next fiscal year. When we do our evaluation in November, we're evaluating her on the previous fiscal year, July 1, June 30th.
Okay, but that is not what we've been doing, Jeff. That's my concern.
Absolutely.
Well, you know, we've tried to do that, but you're...
Well, that's where we've, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, let me hear. Let's hear a new voice, Mr. Schutzwain.
That is what we're doing, but we're collecting evidence beyond June 30th because the MCAS scores and the accountability reports are looking at the previous year as well, and we don't get that date until September. So that's the reason for the delay. If we had a full set of state scores and accountability measures in June, we, I'm sure we'd accelerate the time that we'd have to return the evaluation.
But this is why for the past four years, I've asked for these dates to be changed from the end of June, I mean, end of November, to the, to the November 30th, December 1st through November 30th, or something like that, to make that inclusive. That's all. Just bring some consistency.
No, 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 no.
Okay, I think right now we're just going to try and focus on the new pieces.
Yeah, so all we're doing right now is codifying existing practice. I think what Mr. Hainer's talking about is an appropriate conversation for a retreat if we, if, it could, maybe an appropriate conversation for a retreat if you wanted to do that at some point. Talk about the evaluation itself and how do we improve it, if that's what we wanted to talk about. But, but that's a, that's a broader conversation.
Yeah.
This is very, very narrow here. This is...
Right, I think right now we're just talking about the new, you know, in different parts. Okay, Dr. Seuss.
So I like it. I think it clarifies the process. I would like to add one more emendation, what I think is an emendation. It's a single word, but I think it's significant. In the bullet that by March 31st each year, the superintendent shall present, I would like to put the word written in term report. By March 31st each year, the superintendent shall present a written interim report, because I think there's been a lot of unclarity about what that report looks like. And this year, we got something that was very vague.
Okay. Mr. Carden, did I see your hand up?
Yes. So I'm, I'm still a little bit confused, though, by the new bullet and the, the second new bullet and the last bullet. So since I wasn't there for the discussion, these comprehensive plan elements are going to be different from what the items, the indicators and elements that we measure the superintendent by?
Yeah, so it would be, so in the, what the district usually puts together are action items and specific activities that are going to take place. And often, the chart often includes the activities, sometimes she lists the owner of those activities, and then the measurable outcomes of those activities.
And isn't that what we measure her by, though? Those measurable outcomes? Or they're different measurable outcomes?
They're different, they're different. So in the, in the, in what she picks on, on, on June 30th, she presents her yearly goals to the school committee. She selects some of the district's goals by which she will be measured, and she indicates what evidence she's going to present for her own evaluation.
Okay. I, so I mean, I'm all for waiting till the summer. I just think it's going to be hard for her to pick out those goals until she sees all the goals to choose from, all the measurements to choose from. But I'm fine with supporting this and we'll see how it goes.
But you actually, so shall approve the district's, but you actually made a good point, Len. So actually, the third bullet there, by June 30th each year, the school committee shall approve the district's yearly goal objectives for the coming fiscal year. We should probably put that in so we're clear.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So, I mean, this is a first read. I'm going to incorporate these changes that Len indirectly create, surfaced, and then what Jennifer created, surfaced, or sent. And then I think next week is, two weeks from now is the second reading, and that's time to ask Dr. Bodie herself the questions you just asked.
Okay, Mr. Hainer?
I'd just like to state for the record, this is the only person in the district who sets his or her goals and sets the criteria. The evaluation tour usually is, has a great deal of input on that for everyone else in this district. The superintendent, the way it was just presented, is setting the goals, will set the indicators, and we either accept them or reject them. And rarely have we ever rejected them. I'm, that's for the, I'm making a statement, that's all. I'm not asking for dialogue.
Okay. So we'll get it again and we can have more discussion.
Yeah, I would just, one, one point, I would, I mean, we can modify them. We can, you know...
Initially, the state law specifically states, or the regulation states, that the school committee will set the goals and the indicators in concert with the superintendent. We have, we have flipped that around, in my opinion. And that's a choice. The committee is, and we have the choice to do that. I'm not saying that we don't, we, we can't do this.
Okay. Okay, well, I think right now we're discussing these parts and we've gotten a reasonable sense of what to do.
Yeah.
And we'll hear more in two weeks. So moving on, final remarks paper. Subcommittee and liaison reports. Budget.
Thanks. So we had a busy meeting last week. We covered four items. So we discussed updating the FY19 budget to reflect the increase in the chapter fund, 70 funding, and the administration will hopefully come to us with a proposal at our next meeting for those amounts. We discussed the revolving fund balances. Our consensus was that there is sufficient funds available overall to meet some high, high priority, one-time spending needs on things like technology, classroom equipment, and curriculum materials. So hopefully that will move forward over the summer. We discussed, not very in-depth, building rental fees for community ed and after-school programs. We are charging after-school programs, including our own programs, rental fees, but we're not charging community ed rental fees, so that's something to explore. And Jeff and I jointly put together a process to develop the multi-year budget plan, which both committees addressed, and there was a bit, a little bit of clarification discussed, but otherwise we're set to move forward with that as well over the next few months.
Len's being kind. He put it together and I thought it was brilliant.
Can we comment on it?
Okay. So I guess that's a question, do we want to talk about it?
Yeah.
Now, because we just got it, or...
It can be later, but it can be later.
At another meeting.
I'm ready, we can talk about it now, you want me?
Well, okay, I didn't have much time to look at it.
Oh, oh, oh.
We should talk about it, I think.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, I'm taking, we should, so maybe at the next meeting, we can just go over it.
Sure.
And people have a chance to, to look at it and think more. Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
I don't know that we'll meet, meet again. Well, if, if John wants us to meet, we will. If not, we'll wait till the fall, or the summer, actually. We have, we have to work on the plan over the summer.
Okay. Community relations?
Yeah, we had a meeting on the 17th, met with many of the leaders of the after-school programs, and it was very helpful to hear their side of the story and, and what they saw as the constraints. I want to make, clarify some of the comments that were made earlier. These are numbers, and actually Dr. McNeil can help me on these, that I have heard, that I have in my notes, that for next year, we are increasing Thompson by 20, Hardy by 20, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Dallin by 20 to 25, Racket by 10, and Stratton by 26. Those were the numbers I think we got from the meeting. So we don't yet know about Dallin. So we...
Do you know about Dallin?
Oh, no, not Dallin, it's Pierce, I'm sorry. We don't know about Pierce. Yeah, we don't know about Pierce.
Yeah.
Fideli House also said that they were going to increase by 20 in the meeting, so that was helpful. Does, those numbers sound right to you?
Yes, yeah, yes. And then you said Stratton 26?
Yes, Stratton 26, yes. And, and I also want to say to the public, all those people listening still, that, that this is a long process that we've done. Dr. Bodie actually has done a lot of work on alleviating some immediate problems. We have not solved this problem. We are, we are, we expect that we will continue this year and, and next year to look at this issue and to look for sort of a long-term solution. So, so it's great to have had some slight relief, but we're not putting it to bed. We are continuing on this, this issue. And our next meeting is still to be determined. We're hoping to talk to the administration about more issues.
Well, we met on Friday at 4:30 in the afternoon, and we, there were three things on the agenda. There's a discussion about the cultural competency objective, which is part, which were part, part of goals one and two, overarching goals one and two, and the district leadership. Kathy and Sarah Bird took notes and listened to the public and maybe changing some of the language. I don't know if that's...
Yes, the, the current version of the goals and the objective that have been presented is a, is still in draft form.
Yeah.
And so I just want to make sure that, that's, that's known and that, yes, we will continue to work on refining the language.
Yeah, so they, so there was a chance for people to voice different perspectives on that. We talked about the process issue, which we just addressed here, and then we talked about the multi-year plan and how we're going to work with the budget subcommittee. We meet next on June 5th at 4:30 PM, and we're going to go over another draft of the goals, I believe, at that meeting. And then those goals are going to be presented to the full school committee on June 7th. Is that what that Thursday is? I don't know whatever the Thursday is, 6th?
Oh, no, 7th.
7th? Whatever the Thursday is. So we're going to vet them. We're going to have a discussion. It's 4:30 in the afternoon. If people want, people are welcome to come if they're available.
Okay, great. Facility?
And, you know, at that time, I can ask, we can ask Kathy more about her, her, her goals for, as superintendent, to the point raised earlier.
Okay. Facilities?
We met on Tuesday, the 15th, and discussed the Pierce playground. Mr. Donazio told the group that capital planning is designated $20,000 to review the playground and a plan for rehab replacement in the following year. The plan is, for this summer, is to help us hire, that money to hire playground specialists with the planning. And the Pierce parents will be getting input from parents on June 2nd from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We have no, no meeting planned for the near future.
Okay. Policy?
Policies, we have a meeting planned for 4:30 on Thursday, June 14th.
Great. Legal service?
I think it's time.
I think it's time. High school building committee, we've already heard a lot from. Gibbs?
We met last, this week, met earlier this week, got some updates from Ms. DeFrancisco about their plans. Sounds good. Planning for the parent forum, which is, the date escapes me now, but is in June and has been posted.
Liaison reports. Anyone? No? Announcements. Mr. Hainer?
I have several. Chief Jefferson, Fire Chief, wants to offer any member of the school committee the opportunity to take a CPR course, another medical training. I put at your table a list of the, the next two dates, but if they can't, if you can't do that, just contact the gentleman there and he will let you know future dates. I, I think it's worth taking, I'm planning on taking it next Wednesday, next, excuse me, next Thursday afternoon. Second one is reminder that Memorial Day program, Lieutenant Colonel Strobel, will be the keynote speaker at the town hall on Monday, May 28th, starting at 9:00 AM, and followed by laying of wreaths at veteran sites at Mount Pleasant. That afternoon, there will be a free showing of Taking Chance starring Kevin Bacon, 2009 historical drama film based upon the experiences of Marine Colonel Strobel, who is the keynote speaker. He will be avail, the movie is offered to the public for free, and it, he will be available for Q and A afterwards. And last but not least, tomorrow at 9:00 AM, the third grade students from Thompson will be having their mock town meeting to get all sorts of things passed. I invite people to come, but if you come, you've got to sit up in the gallery because you're not considered town meeting members. You're not allowed to vote. Thank you.
Awesome. Any future agenda items? Mr. Hainer?
I'd like us to find some way to deal with the concerns of the Dallin parents that were mentioned tonight. And I would also like the committee to consider, before we adjourn for the summer, the idea of changing school committee meeting night from Thursday to Tuesday night. There are an awful lot of events that take place on Thursday nights. It seemed to happen to be the second and fourth Thursday night of the month for a lot of them that a lot of us want to attend, and we're not able to. So I'd like to just have that, a discussion on that.
We can have a discussion on it, but building committee's been on Tuesdays, and there's been trouble moving it around, and you'll lose two of us. I mean, it's...
No, I understand. I...
It's all lockstep.
I based it on the fact that the member that had the objection in the past is no longer a member.
Okay.
So, we have another issue now. Okay, I forgot that.
Yeah.
I have a...
Okay, so just a sec. So calendar, Tuesday instead of Thursday. Okay. Mr. Thielman?
So just another, I want some clarification. Are we meeting on June 21st?
I think that we should meet on June 21st.
Okay.
I'm feeling, although we don't have an official vote that we have to take about the high school selection, it's a big enough decision that I think we should be involved up until the end, and if we lose that meeting, we don't have any way of making any, any further input. So I know normally we often drop that meeting, but at this point, I think we all should plan to be here, and it can be quick if there is anything to discuss.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I assume that would be the night that we're voting on the... I assume that would be the night that we're voting on the, the, on that piece of, that policy that we were just discussing.
No, it's tomorrow, it's...
Next meeting.
Next meeting is the second reading, June seventh.
I'm talking about the district goals themselves, they're supposed to be reported to us by June thirtieth.
Well, she's supposed to, she, her intention, Kathy's intention is to get something to us by June seventh, get the modification by June seventh.
Aye.
Yeah, which we're gonna bet on the fifth, yeah.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, so, that's the goal.
That's two weeks from now.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, Dr. Seuss?
Um, I think I've mentioned this before, but, um, I'd love to see Denny Conklin come in to talk to about the changes to the middle school curriculum, because I think that, that the community doesn't know, and certainly, I don't actually think the entire school committee knows, that we are focusing on civics in eighth grade, that it's going to be restructured so that eighth grade is all about civics, um, and I think, you know, the issue about whether we teach civics comes up often enough, that it'd be great to have him in, um, to make that presentation.
Okay, um, did I see anybody else with agenda items? No, okay, so, moving on, we now will go into executive session, we will not be returning for a, um, afterwards for vote, so we'll exit directly out of executive session, so we're going to go in to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiation with union and/or non-union, and with, which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, and, or to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, collective bargaining may also be conducted, um, and can I have a motion to go into executive session? A second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote, Mr. Haner?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Aye, and with that, we are now going into executive session, thank you.